Almighty God, we who are gathered together in council pledge ourselves to work in harmony for the welfare and development of our rural city. Guide us, we pray, in our deliberations. Help us to be fair in our judgment and wise in our actions, so that prosperity and happiness shall be the lot of our people. Amen. Acknowledgement of country. I would like to acknowledge the traditional owners and custodians of the land, which now comprises the Muljura Rural City Municipality. We pay our respects to elders past and present and celebrate and respect their continuing cultures and acknowledge their memories of their ancestors. Good evening and welcome to the first Planning Delegated Committee meeting, this Thursday, tenth of February two thousand and twenty-two. I welcome councillors, management staff and those members of the public viewing the live stream or watching the recording at a later time. As part of our efforts to contain the spread of COVID nineteen and in accordance with section three nine five of the Local Government Act two thousand and twenty, this council meeting is being held by virtual means and livestreamed on council's website. It is therefore not open to the public to attend in person. Present tonight, and if we can all say that you can see and hear the other councillors on calling of the name, Deputy Mayor Cindy Power.
Hello, I can see and hear all of the councillors. Thank you.
Councillor Helen Healy.
Hello, I can see and hear all the councillors.
Councillor Anne Arney.
Hello, I can see and hear all councillors.
Councillor Glenn Milne.
I can see and hear all councillors, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Jason Modica.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I can see and hear all councillors.
Councillor Jodie Reynolds.
Good evening. I can see and hear all the councillors.
Councillor Mark Eccle.
I don't want to disappoint you, Mr Mayor, but no, I can only see councillor Glenn Milne and councillors come up and then they disappear. And the sound is ordinary too, it's breaking up.
Think that might be your internet. I'll just check with staff. Can you see all the names or is there just no, and there's no video?
Yeah, no, I can see all the names except councillor Milne's photograph is.
I would say it's your, it's your, it's your internet at home, Mark.
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
Um, you may have to be an apology if it doesn't rectify itself in the next couple of seconds, unfortunately.
Okay. Yeah, well, that'll have to be the case of councillor Cindy's come up, but no, I think it's been coming in and out all the time, Mr Mayor. I think that I should be in apology, so the meeting can go ahead as planned. Sorry.
Thank you, councillor Eccle, and yeah, no, that's okay. We'll, we'll put you down as apology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Stefano Di Pieri.
Yeah, yes, I can see and I can hear everyone. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. And also present, we have acting CEO Martin Horson, acting general manager, community Mark Jenkins, acting general manager, development Andrew Millen. Uh, no, sorry, Ma- sorry, Mandy Whelan, uh, general manager of corporate Chris Parham and manager of governance and performance Lani Bear. Obviously, there's the apology of councillor Eccle. So we move on to item. Sorry, we have to vote on that apology. So do I have a mover? Councillor Modica, do I have a seconder? Councillor Milne, I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour. The motion is carried. Thank you. We now move on to item five, planning reports, five point one, two lot subdivision of area of clause A of Covenant K four seven nine seven eight four, dash four five four eleventh street Muljura. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant and therefore does not need to be decided by council tonight. Move on to uh, five point two, the use of land of warehouse, stockyard paneling, uh, paneling business, six sixty Porson Avenue, Irinpool. Councillor Milne.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move an alternate motion.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, uh, councillors all have a copy of this. That um, I'd like to move the council having caused notice of planning application, number double five point two oh two one point zero 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 eighty-seven dot double zero one, to be given under section fifty-two of the Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty-seven and or the planning scheme, having considered all matters required under section sixteen.
Councillor Healy.
Uh, councillor Milne actually referred to the planning application number as double five in the beginning. He needs to just rectify that for the records. Thank you.
Uh, double zero five.
Thank you, councillor Milne.
Uh, section sixty of the Planning Environment Act nineteen eighty-seven decides to grant a permit under provisions of clause thirty-five point oh seven dash one of the Muljura Planning Scheme in respect of the land known as six sixty Porson Avenue, Irinpool, and for use of the land for a warehouse in accordance with the endorsed plans with the application dated twenty-sixth October twenty twenty-one, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the commencement of the use amended plans to the satisfaction of the responsible authority will be submitted to and approved by the responsible authority. When approved, the plans will be endorsed and will then form part of the permit. The plans must generally, must be generally in accordance with the plans submitted with the application, but modified to show, um, A, car parking spaces in accordance with the requirements of clause fifty-two point oh six dash five of the Muljura Planning Scheme. Two, concurrent with the plans required by condition one of this permit, a management plan to the satisfaction of the responsible authority must be submitted and approved by the responsible authority. Once approved, the management plan will be endorsed and will then form part of the permit. The management plan must provide for the following matters. A, measures to minimise the impact of vehicles arriving at queuing and parting from the land. B, noise attenuation, uh, measures to be put in place to protect the amenity of nearby residents from the operation, having regard to the EPA guidelines. C, measures to minimise the generation of and dispersal of dust. D, details of a twenty-four hour hotline for access to a contact person accountable for the activities occurring on site and compliance with the management plan. Point three, the use as shown of the endorsed plans must not be altered or modified in any way without prior written consent of the responsible authority. Four, the permit shall lapse if the business ceases or changes ownership. Um, permit expiry, the above mentioned planning permit expires if one of the following circumstances arise. A, the use is not started within two years of the date of this permit. B, the use is discontinued for a period of two years. The responsible authority may extend the periods referred to if a request is made in writing in accordance with section sixty-nine of the Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty-seven. And that's the motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do I have a seconder for that alternate motion? Councillor Arney. Do I have anyone that would like to speak against the motion? Councillor Reynolds? Uh, okay, we'll start off with the, the debate with councillor Milne.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, when we're looking at applications in the farming zone, the purpose is to ensure um, that non-agri- non-agricultural uses, including dwellings, do not adversely affect the land. Uh, the other point we've got to consider is to encourage retention of employment and population to support rural communities. And uh, under both of these headings, this application meets those points because it's not about actually building a building. It's a permit to have a warehouse inside an existing building. Uh, it's not adversely affecting the land. If you have a look at the photograph of where the land lies, there's, on that side of the road, there's absolutely nothing growing. Um, it's uh, across the road, across twentieth street, which runs alongside of the land, you've got a motorbike track, um, which will create dust and does create dust, in fact. Uh, if you had table grapes there, it would be a problem. Um, on the other side of the land, you've got land that's basically been for a number of um, fruit properties or a number of blocks, rather. Um, you can see it's almost gone back to native veg. Over the back fence, again, native veg and a channel reserve. Uh, behind that, you then have um, the old Muljura landfill. And behind that, you've got industrial land on twentieth street. And uh, and there's quite a bit of industrial land just behind it. So if you look at the surrounding areas, there's not a lot of agriculture happening at all. In fact, it's probably more industrial and recreation. This business will keep people working. It's similar to a business that operates straight across the road. Um, there's uh, similar activity uh, straight over the road from where this is. So um, this uh, the idea of having a warehouse there fits in with the local community. If it's not used for a warehouse, there doesn't seem to be the opportunity to um, have it moved back to a fruit growing property due to the need to get water licences. And if you look at some of the surrounding land, if you head along Porson Avenue, see some of that land has got cars and all sorts of things kept over it. And um, this is important use. It keeps it as an agricultural use and it'll, it uh, will keep people employed. So I think I'll just leave it at that. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Milne. Uh, as a second, councillor Arney, would you like to speak for the motion?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, to me, this is straight, rather straightforward. Our staff have done a job that uh, allows the provision of a permit that satisfies the statutory regulations, um, allowing us to provide the permit. I think it's as simple as that. Um, if it was prohibited and illegal, we couldn't do it, but they've demonstrated that we can do it. So I think it speaks for the fact that we should pass this and allow um, the applicant to continue with his business. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Arney. I'll now pass on to councillor Reynolds to speak against the motion.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, once again, we're in a position where we are proposing to allow uh, applications of the land which are not recommended and not um, consistent with our planning rules in a particular area. We've been warned multiple times by experts coming in and speaking to this council and talking to us about planning and talking to us about the, the planning um, rules and regulations. Multiple times we've been told about, you know, the um, consequences of ad hoc, you know, allowing of, of certain things to, to go on in certain areas and how that might affect our planning going forward, how this might affect the future people trying to plan for things happening in the Muljura area. How, you know, we've, we've seen it happening in um, in the past in Irinpool and how those ad hoc um, decisions by past councils are now affecting what we can do and what we can't do in the places that we want to expand in Irinpool, for example. So multiple experts have come in to talk to us about this. Um, as I've said about these decisions in the past, all the, the decisions that we've had come to us in the past have all been about the farming zone. They've all been about the Moya. And uh, you know, we're basically told by um, councillors who have no expertise in these areas that, that, that we can't grow anything on there. Look, look at this land, it's not growing anything. But there is no support.
Point of order, um, Mr Mayor.
You, can you please explain your point of order?
Yeah, saying that councillors uh, with regard to growing, um, well, growing things on the land have no expertise. I um, I'd take exception to that. Um, I think there's a number of us that actually do have some expertise in that area.
I think you were referring to expertise in planning department, weren't you, councillor Reynolds?
No, I was actually referring to the councillors. I was referring to Glenn Milne as councillor, who just moments ago said that, look at the land, there's nothing growing there. And therefore, it's, it's in his eyes, it must be unproductive. But Glenn, where are your credentials in this area? You know, what, what studies have you done here?
Councillor Reynolds, we need, we need to keep to the, to the subject, please. So I'll allow you to continue on.
I, I would like that statement withdrawn. For the benefit of councillors, I grew up on the land and probably spent twenty years working the land and my fa- my family, fourth generation.
Glenn, enough, okay? Continue on, councillor Reynolds.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. The proposal needs to be, if it's going to be, if you're going to uh, reject the proposal or reject the planning department's recommendation based on um, you know, this information about whether or not the land is productive or not, it needs to be coming from a particularly, it needs to be coming from a place of proper study. We don't have anything like that. Once again, we've got a situation where we've had this um, uh, work, this, this um, industry that's been going on on this land that wasn't applied for, but um, a- and that is because, in my view, there's no respect for this council. There's no respect for the planning department, for the planning um, that we have in place here. Because we keep allowing these things to go ahead, we need to have respect for our planning and for our planning department and for our, us as councillors and as strategic direction.
Point of order, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Milne, it's time. So will, anyone else who would like to speak for the motion? Anyone like to speak against the motion? Councillor Modica? You're on mute.
I ripped into that one without even considering it. Look, I this, I'm torn by this. It, it, it offers uh, one of the most difficult things you can uh, can try and consider, what is orderly planning? Uh, so I don't really have anything against the people who have started the business. I don't have anything against where it is, but anybody can jump online and see what that land was uh, zoned for prior to starting the business. Uh, I, I agree with councillor Milne. We need to look at employment. We need to think about how this community is going to grow, but we also need to adhere to the planning rules in place. Yes, we do as councillors have an opportunity to engage with that and change that. But I feel at this point, because this was called over from last year, we're managing and repairing a problem that's been delivered to us through someone who didn't do their due diligence at the start. Once again, I don't have a problem with the debate we're having here. I don't have a problem with the people doing what they're doing. I'm assuming other people are doing the same thing and we've got a litany of planning issues that are very similar to this, which is another issue in how you change planning as a town, as a town grows. But I don't like the idea of councillors being asked and staff to put their hand up to rectify a problem that could have been solved before the shed was built. So I am torn. I think we need to do a lot of work on planning. I think that that every year you go by as a councillor, you pick up more knowledge on how planning works. Um, and it seems simple and it seems if, if, if only one gets through or two gets through, it's not much of an issue. And in some instances, I don't think it is. But I just feel conflicted that we're covering up a choice that we weren't given the opportunity as a council staff or elected to consider at the time it was made. So I thank you very much for your time uh, this evening.
That's enough, someone.
Thank you, councillor Modica. Uh, anyone would like to speak for the motion? Uh, Deputy Mayor Power.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have, am I allowed to ask a question for clarification at this stage?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, councillor Milne, in his opening of the debate, um, said that there's a business across the road that's, has similar, um, it's a similar business across the road and that's news to me. Um, and so my question is, is, is that true? There's a business across the road doing a similar production?
I'll pass on to JM of devel- uh, development. Mandy?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. That's actually irrelevant to the question at hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would you like to speak for the, for the motion? No, okay. Are there any other ones that want to speak for or against the motion? Councillor Healy?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Um, like councillor Modica, I'm really torn over this. I really want to see the employment continue and business thrive in Muljura. But many years ago, Muljura Rural City Council had their planning powers taken away for their incidences just like this. And the actual Muljura older irrigation area, the protection of that area is a remnant of having. of having lost our planning powers, that was one thing left in place to make sure we didn't further lose any more agricultural ground. So as councillor Reynolds mentioned, I fear the more we do this and we chip away at that older irrigation area and I'll repeat, which is a remnant of us losing our powers, it's the one thing that we still don't have power, well, we, we do, but it's still protected under the act, so I'm very torn, um, with this whole proposal. Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else that would like to speak for or against the mo? Yeah, councillor Di Pieri?
I'd like to speak in favour of the motion. Like other councillors and colleagues, I recognise that there are complexities involved here, but I, we also have to recognise that sometimes the law is not always a hundred percent correct. In fact, if I may digress for a moment, I think that in your heart, many of you would, would agree that the family that's been denied residency in Australia, up in Queensland, I think most of Australia would say, yes, that's the law, but our humanity and our concern would say, well, the law sometimes is not correct. I, I think this business has been there a long time, it is productive, it's in an area at the end of town. Um, and this constant conflict between, you know, we are invoking always, um, the possibility that the government, the ministry may remove our, our, um, our ability to decide as we wish, well, it's neither here nor there. Um, there is room for this decision to be made and I, I think that even on compassionate ground, we should proceed with it.
Thank you, councillor Di Pieri. There is no others to speak against the motion, I'll get councillor Millen to close the debate.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I'd like to just make it quite clear that this is about what's going to happen inside the shed that exists. Um, this isn't about building another shed, it's not about, um, removing the possibility of anything being grown on the land. In fact, um, I guess, you know, if you like salt bush, well, the land is productive and so is all the land around it, because there's salt bush growing everywhere. Um, the salt bush can happily continue to grow too, but we're, we're not building or the applicant isn't asking to build anything on that land, it's about what's happening inside the shed, the shed exists and it's there and you can build a shed on farming land, it's about what they're doing. So, um, we aren't taking land away, we're not, um, allowing them to take land out of production as such, because it isn't producing anything, but there's certainly nothing to stop them if next week they decide they don't want to put fences together, uh, but they want to grow grapes, they can get the tractor out, rip the land up and away they go again, because there, there won't be anything extra built on the land. So, um, this is just about continuing on a profitable business, assisting farmers, it is an agricultural business, um, that'll help keep some employment out that area. And, you know, if, if they decide that they want to grow something on that land, they can go ahead and do it tomorrow, providing they can get the water and put the water infrastructure back, um, that the government allowed or demanded that be taken away, um, when land was taken out of production by the federal government. So, um, you know, I wish some luck and I hope that this comes through. Thank you, Mr Mayor, that'll do.
Thank you, councillor Millen, I'll now put the motion to a vote, all in favour? All against? The motion is carried. I'll now move on to item five, urgent business, and there is none, so we move on to the closure of the meeting. Thank you all for the healthy debate and it's good to see, um, hopefully a few people tuned in and listened to the debate as well. So thank you all councillors and, and, and council staff, thank you.